I call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. The first order of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and Alderman Vapurzan is going to lead us in that tonight.
Let's pray, Heavenly Father, we love you. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening. Thank you for the health and the strength that you have provided for us to do so. We're thankful for our freedoms and for our city, for our leadership as we get ready to change new leadership in our nation, that we may see your hand involved in it. We ask that we see your hand involved here. Give us your wisdom as we lead this city. I pray that you would bless City Clerk Timmons and her family with the loss of her grandmother, that you would comfort and strengthen them. Bless our servicemen and women here and abroad. Pray for their safety as they protect all that we've been provided here. May we not take it for granted. Thank you most of all for your son, Jesus, and what he's provided for us on the cross. Pray that you'd bless now these proceedings. May you be honored by all that we say and do. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't, I think we got flag fairies or something. I don't know. Someone keeps coming. Ah, I don't know. I don't know what happened. It's evident that that's not happening. There are no special guests or announcements. At this time, we have the November 7th minute meeting, minute, meeting minutes in the packet. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I do have.
Okay.
Under the procedural motion here, it looks like Alderman Anderson made a motion and seconded it, so I have, there's a little bit of an error there.
I didn't even see that.
It may be that his name needed to be above because I don't remember making the motion to approve the minutes, but it's just neither one are a big deal, but I thought I'd mention it.
Okay, alright. We will, we will check the record and get that corrected. Y'all want to hold this till we get it corrected to approve these minutes?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
I can't remember it.
Okay, alright, we will hold those until we can get that corrected then. Alright, the next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards tonight on any item. And now we'll move on to the financial statement review. Those were completed today, and so you should have a copy of those at your seat that should have been passed out to you. We, Ms. Cordy was going to work with Ms. Thompson this weekend, and Ms. Thompson had a family medical emergency and couldn't be here, and so that's why we were a little late in on getting these out and everything. But we got them to you today, and I know you're, this is the first time y'all seen them, but what I would recommend is that we go ahead and approve the financials. And if you have any questions, get with us and we'll get them corrected or whatever. But Ms. Cordy is here to explain anything and answer any questions that you might have after a quick review of those.
Hello. Still don't have a PowerPoint. I'll get to that eventually, but I think I've seen most of y'all this month a few times at budget meetings, and like we've said at that, at those meetings, that our fund balance is very strong. And I did actually go back and compare that to a couple of other cities, and like Vinville, I think was at thirteen percent, and we're at forty, so that, yeah, that is something we want to look at, I think, in the future. And once I get a better handle on it, I'll hopefully can give you some recommendations on that. There's just a couple of things on the financial statements that I just wanted to point out. We got the Act IX revenue in, and we distributed that money from the two, I don't know, Dillard's and Kimberly-Clark, is that who that is?
That's correct.
And so we have ninety-three thousand dollars funds left in that, and that's showing as a liability right now, but I'll move that to revenue, to, so that that'll go into our just general revenue. And I'm not sure how Tosh is doing the, using the turnback funds for the LOFIE, so I don't, all of that liability you'll see is, is pretty large right now, but I'm not sure how, how to do that, so I'm going to find out about that. That probably will be the only other number I know that would change. That's, I don't have any other notes on mine. We were extremely busy this month, as y'all know. That's, the only two notes I had was on that, to mention that money.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cordy.
So if y'all have any questions, do you want me to address my other things too?
Hang on, just, Alderman and Mosley, did you have a question on the financials? Okay. That was earlier? Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Alright.
I don't know where I am on the agenda, so do I do the other things too now?
Which one?
The audit and unclaimed property.
The audit will be in just a minute. Yeah, the audit will be next, but let's go ahead and work on the financials right now. Yeah, the, the agenda's over there now, so she made some more copies.
Okay.
Do any other questions on the financial statement for Ms. Cordy? It's the council's prerogative if they want to go ahead and accept it tonight, or if you want to wait till the next meeting? Give you more time to look at it?
I'd go over it.
I, I would like, I'd feel my control.
I would recommend to come over myself.
Alright, that's fine then.
Okay.
Alright, and then, so we'll have, we'll approve the, or we'll have a, hopefully approve the financials at the next meeting.
You'll have more information on the LOFIE?
I will, uh-huh. I was just, I couldn't figure out how that journalization's done and the system that we're using, and so it's just showing as a liability right now in some instances.
I think we got pretty used to her knowing everything.
Yeah. It's nice to have somebody there, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyway.
Okay. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Alderman Vapurzan motion, and Alderman Saunders second. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the motion to accept the 2015 audit report, and the audit was presented at the November 7th meeting by Mr. John Kraft, and went through a fairly detailed analysis of the audit, and, but y'all received it that night, so at that time, y'all requested that you be given a couple of weeks. I did not receive any questions from anybody regarding the audit, so I didn't ask Mr. Kraft to be here tonight, since I didn't receive any questions. Alderman Anderson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept our, the audit.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the 2015 audit. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Holt?
I don't really have an exact question, Mr. Mayor, and it wasn't worth having Mr. Kraft here. Under significant audit findings, there's just a statement that I wanted to sort of get, you can clarify it. In the middle of the first paragraph, it says, "The implementation of the G A B S B Statement Number 68 and 71 resulted in an accumulative effect of change accounting principle which reduced the net position of the city by $2,420,429, as reported in the statement of net position and statement of activities." And then there is four paragraphs below that where it, I, it sounds like it sort of explains that, but he said, "We evaluated the key factors and assumptions used to develop the estimate of the useful lives of the fixed assets in determining that it is reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole." So is there, is there a clarification there? I mean, it's not a, you know, I'll just leave it open for clarification.
I'll try to clarify that, and I brought this in case y'all had questions on that part. I think part of why Mr. Kraft spent so long on the audit was, or on that particular Gatsby is that the rules changed during the last year, and that's one reason it was so slow getting, getting all the numbers that we needed. But the, what he's talking about in that is the net position. If you looked at the 2014 audit report, and you looked at, on page five, it would show our total liabilities of $23,319.37. And if you look at the 2015, same page, I think, yeah, it shows 2014 liabilities of $25,739, which is the $2 million, $2.4 million difference, which basically he's went back so that these financial statements wouldn't show all of that liability in one year. He went back and restated the prior year to adjust for that new rule, basically, and that's, that was the difference.
It's an accounting.
It's an accounting error. Well, not really an error, it's a restatement of changing the law. That we had to go back and restate last year's.
And it's, it's talking about retirement, that we're funding on a regular basis. It's talking about LOFIE, which is the Police and Fire Retirement. We pay every payroll, we, we submit funds to LOFIE to cover that, and they're, they're acting like this is something that we would have to pay out that's not being funded, but it has been funded.
Right, right. It just, his concluding statement of the next four paragraphs all ends in exactly the same wordage in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. So I wonder, is there some detail in there that makes any difference at all?
No, but the detail on, with regards to that liability is on page five and fourteen, and the notes on page thirty-five, so you want to, to review that again. I think page thirty-five, probably in the notes, describes how the rule came about and how we're reporting it now. And going forward, you won't have that issue because it'll be in there for now.
I just didn't understand how, what, what it was pertaining to, but I thank you for your time.
And Gatsby is Government Accounting Standards Board, so it's, it's a rule that they changed that then we had to address.
Right, alright, appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to adopt the 2015 audit. Is there any more discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
We need to make a motion to postpone the financial statement review. It's not an agenda item.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I said, "It's not an agenda item, do we need to make a motion to postpone the financial statement review?"
We did a review on it, we just didn't approve it, so.
The approval.
Yeah.
If you, if you'd feel more comfortable with one, it wouldn't be inappropriate.
It's not an agenda item, it's just on there, it's number six, so I didn't know if it was, it had a letter, if it was more detailed.
Well, it, it is an agenda item, and we review it, but, and typically, we adopt it, but we can just, we can do it at the next meeting. It'll, it'll be up again. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number 915 to appoint commissioners to District 12. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 915, an ordinance to appoint municipal multipurpose property owners improvement district commissioners to municipal multipurpose property owners improvement district number 12 of Mammell, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance 915.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we approve ordinance 915. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
And Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, we have the second reading of ordinance number 916, amendment to the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 916, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
This item is on second reading and requires no action tonight. It's rezoning 4.50 acres on Casey Drive in the industrial park from PCD to C3. Okay, if there's no other, if there's no discussion on that item, move on to the next item, which is the first reading of ordinance number 917, approving the Central Arkansas Library System project bond issue. Madam City Clerk, if you read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 917, an ordinance by the Mammell Arkansas City Council approving the issuance of up to $2.3 million, City of Mammell, Arkansas Public Facilities Board Capital Improvement Revenues Bonds, Central Arkansas Library System Project Series 2016, for the purpose of financing various improvements to and for the benefit of the Mammell Public Library declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
And at this time, we do want to open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this item, we'd like to hear from you at this time. Okay, if there's no one that wishes to speak on that, Mr. Spivey, do you, would you like to speak on that, or, for the applicant?
I merely want to reiterate what we offered two weeks ago, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'd like to answer any questions you may have about the project, the bonds, and the procedure. The procedure is similar to that used in the past. We are asking for your indulgence tonight to waive the rules and to place the ordinance on three readings tonight in order to allow us to move forward, get the ordinance published, and to close within calendar year 2016. And I hope we adequately explained the reasons for that last week, but I'm happy to go back over with anybody again.
I appreciate it. If you'd just do a quick review of why it might be an emergency.
Absolutely, and thank you for asking. As I think we mentioned, the purpose of moving forward this year is in order to preserve the city's complete and full $10 million bank qualification for 2017. The city has not used up any of that, and the Public Facilities Board's bank qualification is attributed to the city. So if we were to wait until after the first of the year, it would reduce the city's bank qualification by $2,500,000. By going ahead and doing it this year, we're able to close the bond issue in calendar year 2016 as a bank qualified bond within the 2016 limit, thereby, thereby avoiding any kind of reduction in 2017. And so that's why we ask for your indulgence in bringing this before you tonight, placing on three readings, hopefully adopting it tonight in order that we can go forward and have the bonds closed this year. I believe it's in the city's best interest to do it this way. It is extraordinary, and I know it's not what you typically do, but we would ask under the circumstances that you consider doing that tonight.
And Mr. Spivey, could you just address where the funds would come from for the bond repayment?
Absolutely, absolutely. These bonds are secured by a pledge of library revenues from a variety of sources, fees, fines, parking, other fees and charges that the library collects as part of its operations. The bond issue that was done for the benefit of the Mammell Library in 2006 was financed the same way. There are a few years yet to run on that bond issue, and this will simply extend that a little bit further. But it allows the library to pay for these improvements out of library funds, does not require any increase in millage, doesn't require any funds of the city. The city, by, through the vehicle of the Public Facilities Board, is acting as a conduit issuer for the benefit of the library, and no funds, no faith and credit of the city or the Public Facilities Board are pledged to repay these bonds.
And these funds will be used to construct a parking lot, a building addition, and then take care of some, the geothermal system that they're having some issues with?
Excellent summary, Mayor.
I understand there's no risk to the taxpayer.
Well, I'm like most folks, I'm, I'm always reluctant to say no risk, but there's no risk in terms of tax money, that pledge of tax revenues, or anything else with respect to resources to repay these bonds. These are coming completely from library funds. So in the sense that no taxes or resources of the city are pledged to secure the repayment of the bonds, that's exactly correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I will, I will say, with due respect, I will be voting no on the emergency clause. I always do, thank you very much.
I understand, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Motion to suspend a three reading on ordinance 917?
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to suspend the rules and have a second and third reading of ordinance number 917. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mosley?
Okay, this is to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and have the second, third reading.
Alright, no.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Okay, passes seven to one. So at this time, we'll have the second and third reading of ordinance 917.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance 917, an ordinance by the Mammell City, Mammell Arkansas City Council approving the issuance of up to $2.3 million, City of Mammell, Arkansas Public Facilities Board Capital Improvement Revenues Bond, Central Arkansas Library Systems Product Series 2016, for the purpose of financing various improvements to and for the benefit of Mammell Public Library declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 917, an ordinance by the Mammell, Arkansas City Council approving the issuance of up to $2.3 million, City of Mammell, Arkansas Public Facilities Board Capital Improvement Revenues Bond, Central Arkansas Library System Project Series 2016, for the purposes of financing various improvements to and for the benefit of Mammell Public Library declaring an emergency clause and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 917?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 917. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote?
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Make a motion to enact emergency clause on ordinance 917?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enact emergency clause on ordinance number 917. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all, or, excuse me, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote?
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Alderman Mosley.
Speaker, on behalf of the Public Facilities Board, Central Arkansas Library System, our firm and Stevens, who's been working with both, we thank you very much. Thank the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spivey, and we do think it's an important project for the city of Mammell, and we thank you for your support in this, and you're working this, and we also thank the library system for believing in Mammell, and that they would do this and enhance our facility out here. So thank you. I know Ms. Joyce Wilson, who's our representative on the COWS board, she slid in there during, during some of this discussion, and, and she will be, we'll be replacing her at the December 20th meeting, and we haven't gotten any applicants yet. I think it's December 20th, it's the second meeting. We haven't gotten any applicants, so get the word out there, we need some good applicants for the Central Arkansas Library System Board. Mammell's representative on that board.
And they can call me if they have any questions about what I was about.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Vapurzan?
Do you have the bidding and construction dates?
I have nothing to do with that. I don't know that Mr. Spivey would know that. Construction dates or bidding dates on the project or anything?
I don't know the answer to those questions. I do know that they have, in fact, he's probably going to walk in here a little later, but I think that Mr. Colter and the staff manager of the facilities may be planning to be here tonight, and so, but he probably just got hung up in rush hour traffic. He may give an answer to those questions a little bit later. I do know that they're down the road quite a bit in the plan for this, so it may not be as fast as I would expect.
Okay, thank you.
They're planning to do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. I should have.
And, and they will be here a little later, I'm sorry.
Do you have to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I guess we do need to close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion that we close the public hearing on ordinance 917. No one spoke, and we're asked to be. Do I hear a second? All is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes, closing the public hearing on ordinance 917. Yeah, we don't do many public hearings in here. Follow the lead of the Planning Commission. Next item is appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a variance regarding Section 14, 143, fences or barriers required for swimming pools by Steve and Cheryl Mosley.
Yes, sir, I do have a conflict interest on this item, so I will be stepping out of the building until this is over. Appreciate if somebody'd come and get me.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Okay, Mr. Ritter, or he? Just state your name and address for the record.
George Ritter, 103 Hibiscus, Mammell. This is a variance, the appeal of a variance that was denied by the Planning Commission. It involves a swimming pool that Steve and Cheryl Mosley have. The pool is fenced on three sides. The fourth side is, there is a natural barrier at the rear of their property, which consists of an inlet from the Arkansas River. And the inlet has banks, the banks are steep, and they're covered with rocks and thick undergrowth. Now, the city ordinance requires that fencing for pools be on all four sides, but a barrier that can be approved in lieu of a fence if it is equally effective in preventing access by small children. And I'm reading, kind of paraphrasing the ordinance, and I emphasize "small." It doesn't say just children, like teenagers or whatnot. Now, Mammell code enforcement has not approved the natural barrier as an alternative to fencing on the fourth side of the pool, and has even gone further and cited the Mosleys because they're now allegedly in violation of the city fencing pool ordinances. Now, at the Planning Commission meeting, code enforcement acknowledged that the, and I'll try to quote this as close as I can, it says, "The probabilities are certainly very small that a small child could get in there," but it would not issue a variance. And again, the reason given was there could be a possibility of an accident within the next 20 to 30 years. Now, now, think about that for a minute. The Mosleys would, in effect, be required to guarantee that there could be no accidents in their pool for the next 20 to 30 years. Now, that's not the law. There's, there's no way you could approve any fencing for any swimming pool or any barrier because no one can meet that standard. You just can't. barrier because no one can meet that standard. You just can't guarantee that there won't be any accidents. What you look at is the condition, the effectiveness of the barrier as it currently exists. So, by including this kind of reasoning, I believe Code Enforcement went well beyond what the law requires. The other reason Code Enforcement couldn't approve a variance was because it said it could not make a quantitative determination. Now, it didn't explain what it meant by quantitative determination, but I took that to mean it couldn't determine whether, what the depth of the inlet was. Now, the Mosleys had presented testimony at the hearing and said it was four feet deep, and Cheryl Mosley will get into that a little bit later. Now, Code Enforcement didn't offer or question that, it just said it couldn't verify it. Well, if Code Enforcement had such a big problem with the depth of the inlet, it had an obligation to make its own determination, but it didn't. It just simply punted. It wouldn't take any action. So, for that reason, the Mosleys had to seek a variance from the Planning Commission, but now the commission kind of went off track. The central issue it should have decided was, is that natural barrier effective to prevent access by small children to the Mosley's pool? And nowhere did we hear any argument or questioning to that effect that it wasn't, that this was not an effective barrier. What the Planning Commission did, it went off track, in my opinion. It got into issues about who owned the property in back of the Mosley's lot. Well, ownership of the property, in my opinion, is immaterial. That property is part of the common property of River Run Addition to the City of Mammell. It was created in 1984 by Mammell Land Development, and that common property is, was designated to be for the use and the benefit of owners and members of River Run Property Association. That includes the Mosleys. And the Mosleys have used that property, that common property, that way for 20 years, over 20 years, and no one has subjected to it. And again, another point here about the natural barrier, it's formed by an inlet from the Arkansas River. There's no ownership issue involved with the natural barrier of that nature. And again, there is no law, which some apparently felt there ought to be, there's no law that says a barrier has to be on the Mosley's property. It's not, and it's, so that issue was not material, in my opinion, but it got, it got a lot of members of the Planning Commission off track. The other, the other problem the Planning Commission, I thought, got into was the side fences on the Mosley's property. Now, those side fences have been in existence for a long time. There is a city ordinance that says side fences cannot extend beyond property lines. And so, that was brought up about the Mosley's side fences. Well, those, that ordinance that restricts the extension of side fences has an explicit provision that says it does not apply to side fences that were erected prior to November 1, 2006. The Mosley's side fences have been there longer, much longer than that date. So, that ordinance does not apply to the Mosley's side fences. Well, the Planning Commission, that wasn't enough. They said, "What if the fences get blown down?" Okay, that's a what-if. It's almost like the accident in the pool is a what-if. You cannot regulate based on speculation of future events. If those fences get blown down in the future, fine, you address them then as to whether you need to create a new fence and comply with the ordinance. For that reason, the, we, the Mosley's had no option but to appeal the variance to the City Council. Now, again, the major issue, in our opinion, is, is that natural barrier an effective barrier to keep small children out of their pool? If it is, then the City Council should overturn Planning Commission and grant the variance. Now, to address that, the specifics of their natural barrier, Cheryl Mosley will come up and talk about it. And two things to keep in mind about Cheryl, she has been there on that property for over 20 years. She's raised three boys. She and her husband have raised three boys. And so, they've got a lot of experience, and so I don't know of anybody in the city that has more experience and knowledge about that inlet than she does. So, I'll ask her to come up and go from here.
Mr. Ritter, I think Arteman Saunders has a question, maybe or something.
I first have a statement that I feel compelled to make. I, second, have a question for you because you are their legal representative.
Sure.
Now, my statement is this. Code Enforcement does not change, they interpret laws. The law reads that you have to have a minimum of a four-foot fence. It doesn't say anything about natural barriers. That's not a call that Code Enforcement makes, okay? So, I disagree with you on that point. Now, second, as their attorney, how long have the Mosley's known that they're breaking the law?
They don't think they're breaking the law.
The law says a four-foot fence.
Well, the law says a four-foot fence or an equivalent natural barrier. And the natural barrier, the natural barrier just has to be the equivalent in far, as far as the effectiveness of the fence in keeping small children out.
If, if, if the law reads a natural barrier, then why ask for a variance? It's covered under the law.
Well, because, for the obvious reasons that they're getting prosecuted right now because the law is being enforced by Code Enforcement says, "You shall have a fence back there." And our position is, you don't need the fence because of the natural barrier.
So, how long have they known that they don't have a fence back there, and they should have had one?
They have not, you're assuming facts, not in evidence. They have not known that they had to have a fence back there. That's the point of it. It wasn't until events, I don't know, a couple of months ago, that Code Enforcement came out, and at that point, Code Enforcement said, "You need a fence." Wasn't until that point that they had any knowledge of that.
I think Arteman Norris has the actual wording here, or, excuse me, City Attorney Norris.
Just to clarify, what the, what the ordinance says is that the fence must be of a height of 48 inches, meet the other parts of the codes as far as what's allowed for fences. And then it says, "In the alternative, if another type of barrier, at least 48 inches high, is preferred by the responsible person, that person may use the barrier if it is inspected and approved in writing by the department enforcing this article. Who shall approve the barrier, who shall show approve if the barrier is as effective as a fence would be in restricting access by small children?"
That's right.
I believe that answers the question.
Yes, yeah.
Did you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Arteman Vaprazan has a question.
I agree with Arteman Saunders. I don't even know why we're here. For any of us who did their diligence and went there and looked at it, who knows what a small child is, would understand if you put a $100 bill on one side of the bank and a small child on the other, there ain't no way he's making it to the other side. If he's good enough to swim to the other side of the bank of that channel, then he's good enough to swim in the pool. There ain't no way. It's a natural barrier. It says twice, "Small child." Chairman Fisher sat right there and said, "This ordinance," he said, "this section is not clear." He voted against it. I watched the hour-long discussion at the Planning Commission. It went round and round. It was like a dog chasing its tail. So much of it had absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about here. The reason that we're here is because there's an alternative. It's a river, or it's an inlet of the river that a small child is supposed to be able to get across. If Tarzan can traverse the inlet, he's okay in the pool. That's Arteman Vaprazan's position. But, let me just say this. It's a bank, it's the inlet, it's a stairway, it's a pool. 27 years it's been good thus far. And the reason that we're here is because the person that inspected it would not approve it, and the Mosley's don't feel that it's necessary. And I am a little bit surprised that we're here because if anybody went over there and looked at it, put five small children on one side of the bank, just have five lifeguards ready because they ain't making it.
Yeah.
And I heard statements like, "Well, we don't know what's going to happen in the future." Well, if that's what we're, if the what-ifs and the possibilities are what we're basing what we're doing here, we're never leaving this room. It's a common sense situation if you look at it.
I appreciate that.
And I'm just, I just, I think we can spin tails all we want, and we can say a lot of things about it, but the fact is, this ordinance says, "Small children twice." Look it up on Google. Look up, what is the legal definition of a small child? I did. Small child ain't making it across that unless they're a good enough swimmer. And if they're a good enough swimmer, and I heard somebody say, "Well, kids swim in that channel all the time," then the pool's not, not the danger. So, it's just, it's a simple common sense. To me, it is.
I appreciate that. And again, that's why we emphasize the fence, and first alternative is the fence, 48 inches.
Well, we have to determine, is that inlet doing what a fence would do?
Okay. And that's why I think you should hear from Ms. Mosley. She will address that quite, I think, quite well.
Put her on.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Hold on, Mr. Ritter. Arteman Anderson?
I just got, I want to clear, clarify a couple of things. If the barrier was accepted by Code Enforcement as the 48 inches barrier, then there would not have had to be asked for a variance, correct?
That's correct.
So, when you came before the Planning Commission, you were asking for a variance because they didn't feel that it was a 48-inch barrier? It didn't meet the original definition?
Well, all I can tell you is, the testimony I have from Planning Commission, the Code, Code Enforcement said, "You need a fence back there." And the Mosley's said, "No, we've got a natural barrier." And there was.
Which is what was stated in the law.
Yeah.
But it has to be equal to the 48 inches, correct?
You read it in the quick. So, the, section 14, 143 says that it shall be approved if the barrier is as effective as a fence would be in restricting access by small children.
Yeah, there's that.
Okay. And we, we convinced three Planning Commission members, but four, we didn't convince.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mosley, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Mosley, 16 Riverwood Place, Mammell. Tina, if you would, please change the slides for me. As George said earlier, our property is unusual. It has three sides that are, move the first slide, please, that are fenced. Rod iron across the front and wooden down the side that extend into the water. So, once you get into the water, our yard is completely barriered off, either by manmade or by the natural barrier, which is an Arkansas River inlet. When you look at the river inlet, on our side, the bank is very steep, and it drops down when the water is at a level. It'll drop down very steeply with rocks. And then, the other side is, goes up probably at least 15 feet, and it's covered with vines and all sorts of things we don't know about because I haven't been over there. And then, this property has been this way since we moved in, in July of 1995. So, for 21 years, this property's been exactly the way we bought it. We haven't taken down a fence. We haven't done anything. It's been the way we bought it. Next slide. This picture shows the inlet down on the, we call it the pea gravel level. You can see there how the bank drops down on this side, and then it goes across the water. This is looking out towards the Arkansas River. The next slide. And then this is looking back inland, and you can see the other side, and you can see here, there in the lower left-hand corner, how it drops off with the rocks. Next slide, Tina. As we discussed, the fence, it's, the ordinance states that fence must be at least 48 inches to restrict access by small children. We believe this natural barrier is as effective in this restriction because overall, we will meet that 48 inches with both sides of the bank plus the water. And again, at no time have we ever been questioned whether this meets it or not, and we've been there for over 20 years. And the owner before us was, we know the pool and everything else was in place in 1989. So, and maybe before that. So, you can go all the way back to 1989 if you want to go back that far. Next slide, please. The code states, it says, "No fence may be beyond the property line." The fence does go down beyond the quote "property line" because it goes into the water, but it's been there, like I said, since 1989, and that ordinance didn't go into effect until 2006. So, again, that doesn't apply to us in this case. Next slide. So, in conclusion, just to keep it short and sweet, to our knowledge, no child has ever attempted to traverse any of the barriers, either on, from either side of the bank, to get into our pool. Steve actually fell in one summer, and I had to help him out. I had to get the long pool pole and help pull him out because he could not get his footing and get up the side. The water was up to his, just underneath his arms. And with the bottom of the river and everything, he just could not get out. There was one other time when the boys were having a great time, and one of their friends ended up in there, and I had to help him out too. And he was a 14-year-old boy. So, he needed help in getting pulled out, and none of the other boys were going to help him out. So, it was me. And then, like I said, we've had no changes to the natural barrier for 21 years. So, next slide, please. Again, this, this shows going from our upper level down to the lower level. You can see the opposite bank, how it does go up. I had Steve stand there, down there, so you could kind of see the height of the opposite bank. It is covered, like I said, with undergrowth and all these vines with stickers on them. I will say, this last summer, when we had all the rain, the water was up the stairs. It wasn't all the way up, but it was up like five or six of those stairs. So, you can see how deep it does get when we do have rain. Yesterday, I did take some pictures of the water, this water. The water remains constant because it is the Arkansas River, and it's part of the navigation system. So, it's not like it dries up and goes away. Anyway, are there any questions?
Yes.
Arteman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl, I live two doors away from you. I'm very familiar with this natural barrier. I live on the Arkansas River, and I have markers out there to show the water level. Now, there are, that water level fluctuates by feet continuously. I see it. In fact, I've seen people go out there, and it was so low on the river itself. I'll tell you a story. I saw a boat come by the back of our house once, behind our dock, and there was two old homeboys out there. I guess they were drinking beer. And the water was so low that they hit mud, and it threw them and their beer cans and everything else out in the water. Okay? That's how low it gets.
Well, I can say, I can say behind, I did not say it did not fluctuate. I can tell you- I can tell you, though, that it has never dried up behind our house, and it has remained at least four feet deep back there.
Well, I'd be surprised, because, I'd be surprised, because the water level in that inlet is determined by the water level of the river. They're gonna be at the same elevation. And I know what happens on the river.
Well.
Because I see it all the time.
Well, I see what happens behind my house all the time, so we'll be respectful and disagree.
Now, so far as a kid being able to swim across that, and, um, when water level's down like that, he might have to walk through some mud or grab a hold of that metal fence on the side and shimmy around the thing. But once he gets to that point, he's got steps leading right up to that swimming pool. Doesn't he? Okay. Okay. That's all I'm gonna say for now.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying the inlet is a natural barrier.
Okay.
Alderman Vaperson?
When it suffices the council and they're done, I would make a motion to approve this variance.
So, do we say it as, uh, approve the variance, or?
Prove the variance that the inlet suffices as.
Denial, or?
How does that work?
Appeal the denial.
Are we, are we voting to, uh, for the variance, or are we?
You'd be voting for the variance, is what you'd be.
Not to send it back to the commission.
Okay, so it's, okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
No.
Thank you.
You're, the, the planning commission denied the variance. Their request now is to bring it before the city council and asking you to grant the variance, is I understand, is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
And how is the variance written? I can't remember the.
Do we know, do we have the variance?
But, that's what y'all would be determining. Mr. Ritter has given me, uh, uh, I guess, the, the language of a variance that says that the, the natural barrier satisfies the fence requirement with regard to the rear side of the property on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact and in their current positions. Which is one, but it's up to the council to determine what variance, if any, should be granted. I guess that's the request from the applicants.
Can we hear from, um, our code enforcement?
Are there any more questions for me?
Okay, Alderman Hold, is your question for Ms. Mosley?
Well, I don't know that I have a, a specific question. My, my thought is that the whole, regardless of the wherefore's of what covers what, for me, it seems like the only question is, is, is the law in place to whether or not, the fact that they have had it for the number of years that they have had prior to code enforcement being in place, does the thing that we call being grandmailed in allow that to be, stand in place or not? I mean, it, to me, that would be the whole thing. I mean, I, I think there has to be a certain recognition, uh, of, of the potential danger, as I have, um, uh, as Mr. Jim Neri had said in his review, that whether it's one year, or five years, or six years, he doesn't want someday, something could happen and, and a life could be lost, or whatever, uh, if it were to come along. So, but besides that, for me, the simple question is, is there, is there a law, a grandmailed law in place that allows it to stand or not?
I don't think we're, we're supposed, we're, we're really determining the, the side fences right now. I think what we.
Well, as to whether or not they have to build a fence at the rear of it.
So, Alderman Holt, it was my opinion that the ordinance dealing specifically, the language in the ordinance dealing with the back fence required that the, uh, four-foot fence be erected, um, uh, or an, another alternative approved barrier, which is a little bit different than we've dealt with. Uh, in some other sections of the code, we have, we allow the fences to, you know, not be up to the code, but they must be replaced when that, or be brought back up to code when that fence is replaced or repaired. Does that make your, and, and?
Yeah.
That was my opinion on it.
Right, I, I was thinking of that, that, that when we discussed a few weeks ago, the fences along the boulevard, and, and what, how that variance applied to this insofar as.
And so, in dealing with that specific, uh, uh, instance, you know, the council maybe, may recall that there was a series of fences that they each could have come in one at a time and gone through the whole variance process. Or, uh, what the council ended up doing was just amending the code to make it so that their fence, they wouldn't each need to come in to bring their fence back into compliance. So, that, those property owners, prior to the council ordinance, each could have individually come in and asked for a variance and gone through this same process. But because it dealt with the whole neighborhood, the council just sort of painted with a broader brush. Does that answer your question, Alderman Holt?
I, I, I believe so, right, I, right.
I, I'd just add, if variance is granted, then the issue of whether there was grandfathering, it's, it's basically moot.
Okay. Alderman Williams?
I think that we're only here to determine if the barrier is as effective as a four-foot fence, right?
For a small child.
For a small child, that's it.
That's it.
I mean, to get all up into everything else is gonna be.
No business.
I think that's an accurate way of looking at the question.
So, it's just a waste of time. This is the point.
Yes.
This is the point that we are to be focusing on, whether this is as effective as a four-foot fence.
In restricting access by small children, yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Alderman Timmons?
Um, a couple of my questions. I had the same question, um, Alderman Holt had about the grandfathering in. But, explain to me, and I guess it's a mute point, if, if Terry's point is valid, um, is the fence to keep safety of the kids out, or also the safety of the kids inside?
So, uh, our ordinance in, in general would be more designed toward keeping neighboring children out of the yard. Some cities have a fence requirement that requires the fence be directly or very close to the pool itself, which would be designed to keep both the homeowner's kids out of the pool and the neighborhood kids, if you will. Uh, ours is just the, sort of the, you just need a fence anywhere, and it could be the outer perimeter, which, if they could open the back door, then they'd have access to the pool. So, of those two types of swimming pool ordinances, ours is the one designed to keep neighborhood kids out.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There are other questions for the applicant?
Not for the applicant, I don't.
Okay. Uh, I think Alderman Anderson asked to hear from code enforcement, is that?
Yeah, I would like to see if he gets an opinion.
Mr. Morley?
I never get to come up here for anything fun.
The nature of it. Yeah, thank you.
Who did that?
The same person who did that.
Thank you. You know, it was my responsibility to look at this situation and make, uh, the, the first variance request denial, and never was there a concern about a child coming across that body of water. You know, of course, they can't do that. But, as it turns out, to simplify all this, let's just forget the water. The water doesn't really have anything to do with why I deny the variance, because it's not on their property, nor is it directly adjoining their property at all. There is a fence that extends on both sides past the rear of their property. For simplicity, let's just take the south side fence. The ordinance that, um, Mr. Ritter read, saying that grandfathered in, you know, if the fence was made before two thousand and six, which it certainly was, but he neglected to go on and read the rest of that paragraph, which says, "However, if a fence exempted by the foregoing provisions is materially damaged, destroyed, or otherwise removed, the same must be repaired, replaced, and reconstructed in compliance with the code." That's where we have a problem. And this is one of the, the pictures, really, that they showed up here, and I'll pass that out. It's. In this picture shows the south fence, and you see, there's a brand-new section of fence, back in the back. Based on the ordinance that we had been enforcing for ten years, and I was on the Fence Task Force that wrote that ordinance, and that was one of our primary concerns when we wrote the ordinance. We wanted to, there was three things we needed to do when we wrote that ordinance back in oh-six. To get the fence heights down to six feet, though, you could build a thirty-foot fence if you wanted to, but, you know, consistent height on residential fences, to make the pretty side out facing streets, which we're gonna do over a period of time. And the third was the provision here that says, you know, "No fences may be constructed across rear property lines," because we had so many people around the city that were fencing in common property. And Jananne Davis, our previous city attorney, had ruled that common property is for the common use of all of the people in subdivision. And it was not lawful for someone to fence in common property and use it as their own. So, for ten years, we have been, according to this section of the code, making people remove those fences from common property when they need repair or reconstruct it or replace. And that's exactly what happened here with Mr. Mosley's property. That new section of fence is not on Mr. Mosley's property or his neighbor's property. A tree fell across it and knocked it down. It was illegal for them to rebuild it. So, that fence is illegal right there. And that's where my problem is, because I have been enforcing this same ordinance, this exact section of the ordinance, for ten years, and have made many people, you know, remove fences or not allow them to put fences on other people's property. That was, you know, a very important part of the code, is to say, "Hey, you can't fence somebody else's property." And I think it's, it's a good rule, and it's something that we've been enforcing. And that's what this fence is doing. And it was fine, it was grandfathered in until such time as it needed replacement or reconstruction, as that said. When that tree fell across that portion of the fence, it was no longer in compliance. They should've asked for a fence permit, which they did not do. We would've had to reject it and say, "That fence can't be there, because it's behind the property line." So, that negates the barrier on that left side, so I can walk around it. I have a problem with the other side, too. It's chain-linked, and when I looked at it, when I was over there, it was at a forty-five-degree angle. It needed repair, it was rusted, it wasn't connected properly. It can't be repaired either, according to the law. That, that leaves openings on both sides that people can just walk up to the pool. So, it's not really about the water. It's about the fact that he has an illegal fence, certainly on the south side, there's no question. On the north side, my opinion was, it needed to be replaced, too. So, I think the planning commission agreed and, and said, "Do like everyone else in the city has done, and, and just put a fence across your property in the back behind the pool and protect your pool." Because those, certainly the fence on the south side, according to the current ordinance, has to be removed. And then, he no longer has a barrier over there. Doesn't have anything to do with the water. Just to simplify it, forget about the water.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, now we come to the same question, why are we here tonight? Because if that fence is illegal, then it should've been removed. And then, we wouldn't be here talking about the barrier that goes in the back. And what we're supposed to be reviewing right now is the barrier in the back. We're not supposed to be talking about whether it connects to the other side fences that happen to be illegal.
Well, see.
So, I don't understand how us ruling on a variance tonight is gonna affect that illegal fence.
Well, and the discussion at the planning commission meeting, and, and Mr. Ritter says in his statement that I somehow did not grant the Mosleys their legal rights, and, you know, part of me rejecting their variance offer was part of the variance discussion. And this is why I rejected it. So, I, I think this discussion is a part of it, and, and if we grant the variance here, it goes on forever, it goes with the property, it's not just the Mosley's. So, it's a hundred, two hundred years it goes with the property. And I have a problem, this is public record now, it's been here, and people read about it in the city, and it's hard for me to enforce, I have already enforced this many times in the last ten years. And in the future, somebody says, "Well, I wanna build a fence across common property." And I have to say, "No, you can't." And they say, "Well, city council members can." Well, you know, why can't I? So, this is the problem I've had with this situation from the beginning. It, it wasn't the barrier, the, the water, they wanted to make it about the water, because they, I think, felt that was their best hope of.
I guess my point is, is if we gave this variance, we're still not saying that you can, um, put a fence against, uh, uh, across, um, common property, because this variance doesn't address that. If we deny this variance, we still have an illegal fence that hasn't been addressed. So, what I'm saying is that I, I think that illegal fence should've been addressed before it came before us.
Well, I wrote a citation.
Okay.
About that, and then, we were gonna wait for this situation. But yes, they were, they were written a citation for violations of the fence, of the fence ordinance, because they are in violation of the current ordinance.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman Vaperson?
How long has that violation fence been up, to your knowledge?
Um, now, Mr. Mosley, when I went out there in early June, the, the tree had fallen across, and from my recollection, the fence had not been repaired yet at that time. Now, when I was out there, Mr. Mosley kept saying, you know, "This is my side fence, and it goes down to the water." I fully understood that that was his property, and I didn't find out until days later, when I pulled the survey out and looked at the satellite and realized his property really was, was back from there. And then, when, when they repaired the fence, I, I knew then that there was no barrier on the side.
I understand.
And then they.
But it's similar, it's similar, it's exactly what Alderman Anderson said. What you're talking about is absolutely no bearing on what we're supposed to do tonight. We've lost sight of it once again. So, we're to determine whether or not there is an adequate barrier for a small child to get into their pool. And as it stands right now, with the illegal fence intact, according to you, no small child is gonna get across there.
Right, now, maybe you could.
But it's.
But.
Whatever's there now is more than what's at Lake Willistee, or at the pond up on Park in the River, which is absolutely nothing.
Yep. Well, again, my, my variance denial was based on the fact they're illegal.
Correct, so, thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Morley, where's the property line in that picture? Do you have any idea?
Well, um, I have, in that sheet of paper, there's a survey.
Yeah.
And it shows the end of this little stairway.
Here.
Yeah, back there, that little stairway goes right to the end of that stairway, which is.
There's two, there's two.
We don't have. And on the first page of, of that handout are blue markings. On the sides are the fences, and then the, the cross mark is the rear property line. And, and so, the sections of fences there that, that extend beyond the, the rear property line is where they're out of compliance. At least, certainly on one side, potentially on the other side.
Thanks, sir.
City Attorney Norris, could you read that variance request by, what he wrote there?
The variance, uh, what Mr. Ritter gave me was, I guess, a request that y'all pass a variance stating that the natural barrier satisfies the fence requirement with regard to the rear side of the property on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact and in their current positions.
Which they can't do legally. The side fences cannot stay intact legally. Back in the back. Back in the back.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Morley, how many times in the last ten years have you found fences like this on public property that you have not had them removed, the fence?
There have been many cases. I do not have a number, ten to fifteen. Every one of them has removed them from common property.
So I think...
Except for that corner that you talked about earlier at Pin Oak Loop. Because of the series of situations, I think the city council made the absolutely appropriate decision to allow those few people because they were told by the city in a letter in '04 that those fences out there were actually theirs to maintain. So that was a separate situation. But other than that, there have been many, and every one of them has had to remove them. And unless the ordinance changes all of them in the future, and there are a lot of them over in Brookshire and different places, when those fences become needing repair, they're gonna have to be removed and brought into compliance with the current code as the code states.
So I think it's a fair assumption for us to make that that fence is gonna come down. Now, didn't you also say, and I'm very familiar with the situation, too, but I'd rather have it in your words, that if and when this fence, this new fencing comes down, kids can come around on the housing side of the water? Okay? So I see, your point's well made. The water is not the issue here. That fence coming down is the issue. Now, one of the questions is, and I asked Ms. Mosley about it, once they get past this fence on that lower section, they can go right up those steps. There's nothing to stop them anymore. Now, Mr. Keltner lives on that side, and he does not have a barrier such that it would keep kids from getting in there. Fences are... Well, so I guess what we're saying is we're gonna open the area up if we pass this variance.
Not if you...
It's an assumption.
Not if you use the variance that's being requested because the variance that's being requested isn't talking about the side fences. If, in fact, the side fences do come down, then this variance is... Then the breach in the perimeter, if you will, is the side fence, not the rear barrier, which is what we're discussing.
Doesn't that say that the side fences must be... What does it say? Must stay intact?
This says that the variance says that the natural barrier satisfies the fence requirement with regard to the rear side of the property on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact and in their current positions.
So if they come down, if they come down, then this is...
If the side fences come down, the variance is no longer...
Valid.
Correct.
But they have to come down because they're on...
But that's not our job.
...public property. I know, but that's...
The cart is in front of the horse.
Well, that's not correct. The planning commission denied it. The next step is coming to the city council. So whether you think it's out of step or not, it's following the letter of the law.
Why make a motion that we approve that as it's written, then? Because it does. It suffices the natural barrier. And then if code enforcement says the fence comes down, then that is illegal anyway, correct?
And the variance goes away.
The variance goes away.
So, you know...
And so my understanding of the citation they've received is for... What was the citation for?
Having a legal fence built beyond their rear property line.
So you gotta take down a six-foot section of fence to put up a hundred section of fence? That sounds like it makes sense to me.
I just thought we were talking about a fence back there on the back property, and I hadn't heard anything about the side fences.
There's two separate issues here.
Yeah.
If I could clear up a couple of misconceptions here on that side fence, the Mosleys did not reconstruct that side fence, their neighbor did. So, and we're talking apples and oranges here. If that side fence is out of compliance, the solution is not to tear it down, but to deal with, if there's some kind of fine involved, pay the fine or whatever as far as the side fence goes. The other thing is, that inlet runs all the way past that neighbor's property. So even without that side fence there, how's the little kid gonna get over the neighbor's property, just like how's the little kid gonna get over to the Mosley's property? Can't do it.
Down their driveway.
The inlet goes out to the river.
They go down the driveway when that fence is removed, that new section of fence. They go down the driveway and then just cut in and go up the steps into the pool.
That has nothing to do with the natural barrier that's in back of the Mosley's property. You're creating, first of all, you're creating speculation on that's gonna happen and create a safety issue. Before, and at that point, you can deal with it. Right now, there's no safety issue. And that's what this council should be all about, not getting off on side fences like this.
Okay. Alderman Anderson, yeah, your light was on.
It was, the question was answered by Alderman Norris, thank you. I mean, City Attorney Norris.
And my problem is consistency of enforcement. That's what I do. It's very tough to tell people all over the city, you can't do this, but Mr. Mosley can do this.
He didn't do it.
He did not do it. The previous owners did it, but he did... Okay.
It has nothing to do with what we're...
But he is using an illegal fence as a barrier. That's the...
Neighbor putter.
Yeah. It isn't, I mean, I think he is.
Alderman Anderson?
You know, when we first started discussing this, it felt like it was black and white. It was, you know, it's a natural barrier. But my thing is, is I don't wanna give a variance that's not gonna be, that's gonna be mute. It just doesn't make sense to add a variance that is not gonna make, not gonna help with resolving this issue because there's more to this issue than just the back barrier. That's the way we wanna be presented, that's the way they wanted to present it to us because he just said he's gonna start to ask for a variance on that side. I mean, that's basically how it was said. And what I say is, I say we go with the opinion of the people that make these, that enforce these laws day-to-day and that we don't deal with. And that opinion is to not give the variance. That's the way I feel.
Let's vote. I make a motion to accept that, the way it's written.
Okay.
Just need a second, then we can vote.
Is there a second?
No, never mind.
Do I hear a second on the... Okay, the motion is the council grant this variance in the way that the natural barrier satisfies the fence requirement with regard to the rear side of the property on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact and in their current positions. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance as it was stated. Does everybody understand that?
So if we approve this and they take down those side fences, then this goes away? Is that what we're saying? And the side fences are going to have to come down?
Unless they get a...
Unless they get another variance, right?
I think that's fairly... There might be other possible alternatives with the side fence. I mean, any... I presume it's possible that they could have legal title for the other land, they could buy it, they could do something. As everything is written right now, if the determination were made whether that fence would be rebuilt today or not, I think that it's the opinion of code enforcement that it would not be allowed to be rebuilt that way today.
So the Mosleys did not build that fence. Am I correct in saying that?
That is correct. But now, another thing that I think was confusing is that fence extends on the common property in the River Run addition. That common property is for the use and benefit of River Run property owners. So it's not like a black and white violation of anything. It's their common property. So please take that into consideration.
The Mosley's cited for this fence, this illegal fence that was built? Were they cited for it or was it their neighbor who built it?
Well, Mr. Morley, you cited him for it, didn't you?
Yes.
Even though they didn't build it.
Because they're using it.
Well, there was no comment.
Yeah, there was no permit application for the fence, so we didn't know who built it or who didn't build it. I just knew that...
I didn't ask a question.
That, I knew that Mr. Mosley was using that fence as the barrier and based on our city attorney's suggestion, we went on and wrote the citation to, you know, get things rolling because it had been sitting for a while without any kind of movement.
But I do need to say one thing. The rules say no fence may be constructed beyond the property line regardless of whether it's common property or not. It says no fence may be constructed beyond the property line.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. But again, take that in consideration with the big picture here. What is safety? What is the public safety involved? And incorporate that, if you're gonna pass it, you can incorporate that into the variance. And you're not doing the Mosleys a special favor by doing it, in my opinion.
Alderman Kelly?
I thought this was pretty cut and dry because I went out and looked at the property as well. But I guess the real question I have is, there doesn't appear to be a natural barrier between the public property and their property. Forget the fence thing. There is no natural barrier between that public property and their property line. So why would I pass a variance?
You're missing the point.
No, I'm not.
The barrier does not have to be on the Mosley's property. There's no requirement that it does. The barrier can be... If the barrier had to be on the Mosley's property, you could never have a body of water like a river as a barrier.
Okay. That does make sense.
We have a motion and a second to grant the variance that states the natural barrier satisfies the fence requirement with regard to the rear side of the property on the condition that the existing side fences remain intact and in their current positions. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Not? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, I know?
No.
So is it... Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Saunders?
No.
Alderman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
No.
Alderman Vaprasan?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
We have four noes, three yeses, and one recusing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Mm-hmm.
The motion fails.
So what now?
So we continue on with business.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have this question for Mr. Morley. It came to our attention that the next-door neighbors built that portion of that fence. Are you, is it in your... Are you gonna go issue the ticket to them now?
Well, as we always do, we will ask that they remove the fence, give them a period of time to do that, and if they do that, then there'll be no need for a citation.
Okay.
But as it stands now, the Mosleys will need to put a fence up behind that pool somewhere.
Right. But they haven't been cited for that, correct?
No, they have time. We will, you know, we'll certainly work with anybody to give them time to do that.
Okay. That's all. I was just curious.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morley. Thank you, Ms. Alderman Saunders. Moving on to new business, we have Resolution 2016-35 listed...
Oh, we need to get Steve back.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do. We need to get Steve back. Alderman Mosley. Sorry, thank you.
What about Steve?
We can talk about chickens, we can talk about fences, we can talk about some stuff.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Coulter, I think, is here from the Central Arkansas Library System.
May I introduce Mr. Coulter?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Y'all moved ahead quicker than I thought you'd get to my issue. My lawyer told me on Saturday I could get here at seven, I'd be all right, but I apologize for not being here when you had a question. I understand the question is, what's the timeframe for our project? The architects and the contractors are working on the final plans. We hope to have that done through the holidays and by, in the January thereabouts. Construction would start in March. Think it'll take seven or eight months. So roughly a year from now, we ought to have all this done. That is, again, the boring down to put the geothermal tubes into the ground 250 feet below the new parking lot, taking them out of the lake, removing an eyesore, and also eliminating the ineffective geothermal process that we have now. We hadn't been able to flush those because at some point in time, there was some concern about having leaks in there. And when you don't flush them periodically, you get buildup and other deterioration that causes risk to your HVAC equipment. So in the long run, we're gonna be a whole lot better off to get them out of the pond, get them out of the lake, and put them down into that new parking lot. And the main thing here is, the great upside is, you got lots of folks who wanna use the library, and we don't have enough parking for them. So we're gonna eliminate that problem by borrowing this money. Library's good for it. We're gonna pay it back with fees and fines, as I told you two weeks ago, from the whole system. No obligation on the good citizens of Malmell. We're on the hook for it. We can pay it. If I didn't think we could pay it, I wouldn't tell Joyce Wilson and other board members we're good for it. But in the end, you'll get a new parking lot with plenty of room to park cars. We'll, I hope, alleviate some of the congestion that occurs out there in the daytime when the school students are getting out. And we'll fix our HVAC problem. We'll eliminate the problems with the piping. And we'll also add some more meeting sprays, meeting rooms, and we'll move some of the children's space into a better part of the library. So it'll be a three-pronged thing, new parking, improve our geothermal, and get us some more space in the library, which is always a good name. And we hope we can have all that done in a year. Seven or eight months construction, two or three more months of tinkering and fine-tuning with the contractor and the architects. But within a year from now, y'all will be able to use those spaces and park out there.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Thank y'all very much.
And you didn't hear us earlier. We appreciate y'all investing in Malmell, so, and improving the library.
We're glad to do it. We think it's a very good place to invest in. It's a good library. I'll tell you one quick story. Last week, there was an Arkansas Library Association meeting in Little Rock. Some author came in from Iowa or someplace to read, and her mother lives out here in Malmell and uses the library. So this woman gets up in front, it's an out-of-town visitor coming in to talk to all these librarians, gets up and says, I just wanna praise libraries generally and particularly the Malmell branch of the Central Arkansas Library System where my mother goes and gets books. So y'all are doing lots of good things out here. We're glad to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much. Moving on to new business, we have Resolution 2016-35, which is listing the past due accounts being sent to the Plaskey County Tax Assessor. And there was a list that was put in your packet that was a draft version, and that list has been refined, and that also was passed out and set at your chairs tonight. The list has been pared down. It's not as long as it was on the list, so it's because some people... some, some people came in and paid and took care of their account balances and things like that after we'd sent them a letter, and we gave them as much time as possible to get them off the list. And so it's down to 107, the question was asked earlier, what is it, it's down to 117,482, and these are only sanitation fees, there are not any community service fees in these, and it's only someone that has a balance over a hundred dollars with the city. So that's at least 90 days in arrears, is what that would be, more than that, so, probably more like 180 days, but. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read, uh, resolution 2016-35, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plasky, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, resolution number 2016-35, a resolution approving names and amounts of certain delinquent accounts to be certified to the Plasky County Clerk, Assessor, and Tax Collector for the collection with the personal property taxes, as a result of non-payment of fees for collection and disposal of solid waste in the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
Okay, this is, we did this last year, and so this is a similar thing, but we've gotta get it done before the end of the month, we have to certify them to the clerk and the assessor and the tax collector by the end of the month. I'd entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
So may I?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept resolution 2016-35. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 918, amending chapter 18 of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plasky, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 918, an ordinance amending chapter 18 of the Mammell City Code to account for the change of the Mammell District Court Judge from local district judge to a state district judge and for other purposes.
Okay, and this, this is the ordinance that we talked about a little bit in the budget meetings that we've had ongoing, because now the judge is not simply a Mammell district judge anymore, we share the judge with Jacksonville, and the state pays a larger salary to that judge than we ever paid our judge, but we, we pick up a pro-rata share of that with the City of Jacksonville, the state pays half, and the two cities pay the remaining half, and we split that up based on our population. And while Mr. City Attorney was looking at the, the previous ordinance that dealt with the salaries and dealt with the office of judge, he cleaned up some things, so I don't know if he wants to address those, but just basically to, to change the, to match state law, is that correct, or?
Correct, I just updated a few side things that are irrelevant, other than the section dealing with the specifics of the judge, primarily, oh gosh, what was in there? The salary, the qualifications, saying things like that, that the judge must be a qualified elector of Mammell, which is no longer accurate, so just updating it to comply with state law. Also, now the district court, it's still a separate court from Jacksonville District Court, but served by one judge, but that court now has countywide jurisdiction and not just ending at the borders, which will be a little bit helpful in some boundary-related issues, or issues that, you know, someone shoplift across the street, you know, what court do they go to, for example? I don't know if I've explained that well.
Okay, there's not any questions, this will be on second reading at the next meeting. Okay, moving on to Mayor's comments, the Veterans Day Ceremony update, we had a very good event, and I wanna thank Alderman Saunders for planning that, and the Mammell Players for helping sponsor that each year, they do a great job, and they did a good job this year and had a, a host of people helping them in that, and Alderman Saunders did a good job on that.
Can I speak to this real quick?
Yes, sir.
And thank you for the compliment, but it's a lot of good people that, that made it happen, but I want it on public record, what I'm fixing to say. This is nine years that I have done this, and it is the first year that I've ever seen our keynote speaker get a standing ovation, and it was our mayor, he did that good of a job. I've never had so many people come to me and compliment me on our keynote speaker, our mayor, he did a bang-up job, so.
No, try on.
That's right, that's right. So I compliment him. By the way, we had well over 100 people there, we had 115 programs, some people, some couples only got one program between them, we only had 11 programs left, so we had over 100 people, which is a good turnout, so.
Can the geese do a flyover? Geese do a flyover.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Just a reminder, we have hometown Thanksgiving this Thursday at 11:00 a.m., I think they're still needing some volunteers to help serve, so if you're not busy, at 11:00 a.m., I see Marion shaking her head at the back of the room, contact her if you're willing to help. If you got family in town and need a place to take them to eat, instead of Waffle House, you can bring them to hometown Thanksgiving down at our community center, but Alderman Timmons does that every year with a lot of help, I know, but she's, she's the one that heads that up, and it's not an easy task, so let's go help her out if we can, and I look forward to seeing all of y'all at 11 o'clock Thursday morning. And then just a reminder, our next budget meeting will be Tuesday night, November the 29th at 6:00 p.m., in the Blue Room as standard, and I've received, the department heads are working on their changes, as y'all requested, so I hope to have that to you. Hopefully, I can send something out by email maybe Wednesday or something like that. And next item is Planning Commission Report, and Alderman Vaprazan took care of that, or will take care of that? Attended the meeting.
It was over at 6:41. Commissioners Gerschner and Johnson were not able to attend, and they proposed a preliminary plat and a preliminary development plan for Country Club of Arkansas Phase 24A, where the softball fields are, if you go down past what used to be Country Clubs, now Milligan over by Lucia Lane, 35 new lots there that were, I think in 2014 originally platted, but replatted for, for some issues, and it passed unanimously. And that was all, it was 11 minutes.
I don't get those.
Okay, next item is Alderman's comments. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's actually a question for you, if you, if you knew, if you have an update on Willistee and when it might be reopened?
This week is when they're thinking it should be done, yeah.
I think some people might have thought that it was open already, and, and it wasn't, or something like that, that's what I heard, but I just, I didn't think that it was open, so that's why I-
Well, now, it was closed down a month or so ago, so that the city crews could make some repairs before the contractor came in, it's been open for a month at least, and now the contractor's actually coming in to put curb and gutter down, and we actually, they, we were originally gonna let them go ahead and drive through, 'cause they're only gonna be working on the sides for the first few days, but we had about an 18-inch drop-off right next to the asphalt, and we felt like that was a situation we didn't wanna risk someone running off into that hole, and so it should be finished by this week, is what the, when I talked to them last Thursday, that was the plan, is it should be completed this week, and that's if they could get their concrete and their kind, or their asphalt in a timely manner, so.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I meant to bring the newspaper that described the incident, but there was an incident involving the Brinkley Police Chief, if I remember, here recently, he was going 105 miles an hour and was stopped by the state police, and he was being chased by his own police department. Has, has anybody read that? Is anybody aware of that?
I'm aware of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be following that, I'm, I'm very interested in that, that, uh-
Yeah.
It was a very much a laughing matter, and among the law enforcement agents, and I, I find that disturbing. I, I will be monitoring that, and I may bring it up again.
Okay, I mean, and I don't know what action that we could have on that, but-
I'm not sure either, but something like that is very disturbing to me, that, that an average citizen would have probably been in jail immediately, and I, I don't understand the situation fully, but something I'll be monitoring.
Was he speeding through Mammell?
No, he was not speeding through Mammell, he was in the county in which he was located, I believe, yeah.
Anyway, that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, Mr. City, or is there any other Alderman's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
No.
All right, if there's no other business before this council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no? Meeting adjourned.